And if these behaviors occur, the Chair at his sole discretion may terminate the hearing and reschedule for another date. In addition, the Chair at his sole discretion will limit repetitious comments, though it is entirely appropriate for an individual to indicate that he or she agrees with the previous speaker. Prior to closing the public hearing, the Chair will ask if there are any new comments, then the applicant will be allowed to make a single rebuttal in response to the testimony which was provided. Once the public hearing portion of the meeting is closed, the Chair will accept no additional public comment. However, a member of the Board at the Chair's discretion may ask the applicant or a member of the public to respond to a question. This will not reopen public comment. Planning Board decisions are based solely on whether an applicant has provided sufficient evidence to meet the requirements of local, state, and federal laws. In this regard, public testimony is most effective when it considers the impacts of a project in light of Sanford subdivision, site plan, shore land, or zoning ordinances, and other relevant regulations. After the Board discusses the merits of each project, it will vote on written findings of fact, since the findings may substantially affect any appeal rights. And also, as a matter of courtesy, the Board asks that those attending the meeting not leave until the Board has adopted the findings for the project you are interested in. After the Planning Board makes its final decision, any reconsideration by the Board must be made at the next regularly scheduled meeting. If anyone wishes to appeal the Board's final decision, he or she must do so within 30 days. The city's ordinances and comprehensive plan are available for viewing at the city's website and in the Planning and Development Department's office at 919 Main Street. Remember, this is a public proceeding. You have the right to hear and see what is happening, and we welcome public participation. Sorry. Just to, just for the record, we have one Planning Board member on Zoom, so we'll be doing roll call votes on everything tonight. And then Jase Clark is absent with notice. All right. So first item on the agenda is minutes for February 15, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Second? You weren't here.
Oh, Steph, I wasn't.
Motion to approve, or second, sorry.
All right. Any discussion? All right, we'll just go down the... Kyle? Roll call vote.
I vote yes.
IMBS, Crystal?
Yes.
Passes five, five to nothing. All right. And one abstention, yes. All right, public hearing, new business file number R15-120E, Country Club, Number One Road, TPD Construction LLC. Jamie, do you want to orient us on this?
The applicant is proposing to construct a 10,000-square-foot office/warehouse building along with associated site work on property located off of Country Club Road, identified as map R15-120E. This project went through site plan approval two weeks ago. They had a few minor issues that we asked them to address, and they have addressed those issues. So at this time, site plan review had a unanimous recommendation for approval, and with a few minor conditions, those conditions have been addressed, so project looks pretty good.
Ready for me? All right.
Hi, my name's Jeff Aliva. I'm with Civil Consultants. With me here tonight is Steve Dumont from TPD Construction. So this project is a 10,000-square-foot building for TPD, for their office and storage warehouse on Route 4, Country Club Lane there. I don't know if we can get the plan up or take a look at it, if you guys have comments on that. Pretty straightforward. We've submitted our DOT driveway permit for access onto Route 4. There's plenty of site distance, meeting the minimum requirements for visibility coming on to, out of the project onto Route 4, and out of the project in the back where we have two driveways for more of a construction access, because we have some overhead doors in the building that go in the back onto Country Club Road there. Site is, is pretty basic. It's currently a vacant lot with some tree growth and some kind of overgrown field. We have two stormwater infiltration basins that we're using to capture and treat stormwater before it leaves the site, and that's on what are the southern portion of the property. We presented in the package a detailed site plans that indicate the construction materials, and also provided a landscaping plan that indicates the plantings along the areas between the project and the butter to the south.
Sorry to interrupt, just one sec. Ben, can you pull up the screen, my screen, please?
So this is a zoom-in of our site plan. You can see that we've got access points on the eastern part of the property, which is the top of the page, and then access onto Route 4 on the bottom. Public parking and parking in the front, and access along the southern side of the building. And then you can see on the plan here, on the right side of the page, our stormwater control areas. We have a small forested wetland that we're proposing to fill for grading and our stormwater on that edge. And we'll have a dumpster. This is, this property doesn't have immediate access to water and sewer, so there will be a septic system for the 15 to 18 employees and a private well. I think that's about it. Answer questions better than...
Okay, we'll go through the public hearing piece, and then I'm sure if we have any questions, we'll be ready. So, all right, so we'll open up the public hearing. Is there anybody who would like to speak in favor of this project on Zoom? I don't know if anybody's on Zoom, besides Crystal. Okay? Anybody who would like to speak in opposition to the project? Anybody who would like to speak neither for nor against, but would like to make a comment or ask a question? Okay. Declare the public hearing closed, and open it up for any questions from the Board or comments, questions? No, I think we're all set. So we get to do findings of fact.
Are we ready?
Ready.
280-16-78, utilization of the site is recommended it is met because the proposed site plan reasonably uses the site.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions, comments? All right, Kyle?
I vote yes.
Jack?
That's right. Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
280-16-7N, solid waste disposal is recommended that it meets because the solid waste is proposed to be collected on-site and removed by a private contractor.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Right?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
And I am also yes.
280-16-7Q, technical and financial capacity is recommended that it is met because the applicant has demonstrated adequate technical and financial capacity.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Right, Kyle?
Oh, yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
And I am yes.
280-16-7S, airport encroachment is not applicable because the applicant has not proposed any development.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Kyle?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
And I am a yes.
280-16-7B, access to the site. 280-16-7C, access into the site. 280-16-7D, internal vehicular circulation. And 280-16-7E, pedestrian circulation is recommended that it is met because the development will not create hazards to vehicular or pedestrian traffic.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Kyle?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
And I am yes.
280-16-7F, stormwater management. 280-16-7G, erosion control. 280-16-7H, water supply. 280-16-7I, sewer disposal. 280-16-7J, utilities. 280-16-7K, natural features. 280-16-7L, groundwater protection. 280-16-7M, exterior lighting. 280-16-7O, landscaping. It is recommended that these are met because the applicant has provided adequate provisions to meet the standards.
Motion to approve.
Did he miss shoreline relationship?
But it's not applicable. So he's going to come back to it.
Oh, great.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Kyle?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
And I am yes. Six-zero.
And then 280-16-7P, shoreline relationship is, the standard is not applicable because the applicant has not proposed any development.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Kyle?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
And I'm yes. Six-zero.
Okay, and I have a draft motion, if you're ready for that?
Yes, we are.
The Plannin Board accepts the information in the October 17, 2023 summer report, grant the requested waivers, and find the proposed major site plan and conditional use application file R15-120E to construct a 10,000-square-foot warehouse/office building along with associated site work on property located on Country Club Road in Sanford, has satisfied the requirements of Article 13 and Article 16 of the zoning ordinance, subject to the condition described below. And then the condition is standard conditions of approval, number two, performance guarantee, number five, outside agency approvals, number six, inspection freesco, number seven, pre-construction meeting, number eight, landscape performance guarantee, and number nine, alteration of plans.
Motion to approve the proposal as drafted.
Second.
Any discussion? Kyle?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
And I am yes. Six-zero. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck.
All right, so moving on to public hearing, new business, LD 2003. We'll let, we'll let Jamie off the hook on this one, and let Erin set us up.
So tonight is, we're going to wrap up, hopefully try to wrap up, our discussion on the beginning phases of amending our ordinances for LD 2003 compliance. So Erin and the Board have talked over the last couple of months. We started with the discussion on the fact that with LD 2003, it basically eliminates our single-family residential zone. So we are recommending that we eliminate our single-family residential zone and merge those with what we currently call the RD zone. Erin today has a draft actual ordinance change in the packet. She is proposing a few minor tweaks to the, to the dimensional requirements that we will need to make sure are discussed tonight. They're, they're nothing major, and it's, it's to try to stay consistent with across the board. And then the second portion of it was the accessory apartment provision, what we currently call an accessory apartment provision, which again, LD 2003 forced us to do some revisions to that, one of which we're proposing to change the name from accessory apartment to an accessory dwelling unit, to be consistent with state statute. And there are a few other minor tweaks, but not, not major tweaks from where we were at. With that said, Erin can...
Is there a house in the single SFR able to attach to water and sewer? Because that's what RD requires, right?
So RD requires, with the exception of one, so every existing lot can do one connection to a, to a private sewer. There is no requirement to connect to public water anywhere in town. If anybody that wants to have a well can have a well if they want to. Currently in the RD zone, it says you shall connect to public sewer, with the exception of one dwelling unit can be placed on every legal lot of record.
Crystal, here's yours.
So that provision is, is proposed to remain. That would allow the, the one connection before they had to tie into public sewer. And to answer your question, no, not every lot in the single-family zone currently is connected to public sewer. But they are all within areas where public, similar to our RD zones, there's, our RD lots aren't all currently connected, but they're within reason. And we felt the few remaining lots that are left, if they wanted to build a single-family house, the ordinance would still allow them to do so. We are proposing to keep the density requirements, although there is a proposal to amend the density requirements a little bit. So it's, just want to make it clear, it's not every house can be turned into a duplex. You would have to have the density, the land mass, in order to be able to have a duplex. So there still are going to be single-family houses in the single fam, what was the single-family residential zone, that have to remain single-family, and/or vacant ones that you can only build a single-family on with an accessory dwelling unit, instead of a true two-family. So we are not completely abolishing our single-family neighborhoods. I just, that will be more important to say at the council level, because I think there'll be some people that, that panic that we're eliminating single-family residential neighborhoods. Due to LD 2003, we are saying that you can build a two-unit if you have the land mass, but a lot of our single-family zone house lots don't have the land mass to meet the density requirements for a two-family. So we, we still will have neighborhoods that are, that are single-family neighborhoods. It's just if they do have enough land, then the potential is there to, to make it a two-family.
Just a housekeeping question, there is no public hearing on this, right?
There is.
There is a public hearing on this.
There is a public hearing on this.
Because this is the last step before we send it to the zoning subcommittee.
So if you guys are comfortable, we're going to ask you to recommend approval to council.
Okay.
If you're not, we can keep going, but we, we advertise the public hearing, that way if you work...
I just wanted to make sure there wasn't, you know, it got dropped down and we're still in the work phase, but no.
We're hopeful that what is provided is sufficient. Again, if we're, if it's not, we're more than happy to, to keep providing more information. But in the event you guys were ready, we advertised it just in case.
All right.
Also, housekeeping, I'm not sure that it needs to be in final ordinance form tonight, or if there's some issues that the Planning Board would prefer the council discuss.
So it, it has to be in the form that they're ready to push it to council. Now, if we read through it and, and there's one minor amendment to it or something, we can make that on the fly and just make sure that the draft copy that goes to council is the one that's amended. If, if they read through your changes that you're proposing tonight for the first time, and they're like, no, then we'll hold it, we'll, we'll keep the public hearing open, we'll postpone it to the next meeting and revisit the conversation.
Okay.
Because there is some information being provided tonight for the first time.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so thanks, Ben. I have up on the screen the sort of second page of that eight-and-a-half-by-eleven handout that I just sent to you, sorry, there. So this should look familiar, I updated the table that we had looked at previously where it was just a direct comparison of the single-family residential zone to the residential development zone. Those are the middle two columns that you can see here, that those are current existing ordinances, and the, basically the space and bulk portion of those zones. We had previously discussed how there weren't sizable differences between the SFR zone and the residential development zone, and putting that together with the fact that we have some existing restrictions on connection to public sewer system, and the LD 2003 that is pushing us towards amending the single-family zone to allow more than single-family. So that was what the previous conclusion was, if you can recall that meeting, that was, I believe, in September, middle of September. On the far right-hand side, I have a new column where I'm proposing what we might accept as the new ordinance. Most of these are similar to the residential development zone, and then there's some items up for discussion as far as trying to further meet the intent of LD 2003, which is pushing for allowing residential within the growth area of a city. So the first item there, maximum net residential density, I'm proposing we keep those the same as the RD zone, six dwelling units per net acre, or with a density bonus, 10 dwelling units per net acre. I will come back to the density bonus in a moment, but any issues with keeping the basic net density?
I think she's alluded to it as well, but she's going to get further down, and there's, there are written guidelines on how to get that density bonus. So it's not just an automatic, they could do 10, they, they have to come to the Plannin Board, and there's certain conditions they have to meet.
Okay, I'll just go through the basics, and then we'll skip to the development, and we can kind of circle back for questions. So the basics are six dwelling units per net acre. The minimum lot size stays the same, 7,500 square feet, that was the same as the RD zone. The minimum street frontage, I'm proposing that we reduce down to 65 feet, which was the kind of minimum in the single-family residential zone. I don't foresee us reviewing a project that has 65 feet of frontage and denying it for that reason. I don't know if you guys agree with that statement, but that was, that is currently allowed in the single-family residential zone. If you could see yourself denying someone that wants to build a single-family house today on a lot that only has 65 feet of frontage, then that would be a discussion point. But if not, I don't see the reason to really make that a necessity to come before you, I guess.
Wasn't there a past discussion in regards to street frontage that we had with Beth? And I think it was, I don't know if this was residential, but it was almost like setting like, like a certain guideline. And, and I think the 75 feet was to account for like that 10-foot buffer from like the road set. Does, is this ringing a bell for anyone else that was, has been on the phone?
We had a long, lot of discussion on the uniform setbacks, which is going to be different than this.
Okay, then scratch that.
So the uniform setback, I'm proposing to remain in place, it's 25 feet basic, and then if you're not able, or you would like to match the setbacks that are already in existence, then you can use the definition of our uniform setback ordinance, which basically takes the average of the two lots on either side of the subject parcel, as well as the four lots across the street, and then you take the average setback. You can take out the largest deviator from that, and before you take the average. And then if that uniform setback comes out to be less than 25 feet, then you're able to use that number instead of 25, so that the basic character of the neighborhood remains.
Perfect.
So I am proposing that we keep that provision in. The side and rear setbacks, I've kept the same, and the general basic maximum height, I've kept at 35. So the only thing that I'm proposing we change for the, basically approve as is, is the minimum street frontage. Any comments on that? Jamie?
Currently in the single-family residential zone, it allows people with neighbor and far department approval to reduce a side setback for an accessory structure down to two feet. Is that something you think we should carry over to the RD zone?
That is something that I've included in the...
In the actual language.
In the development standards section that we need to review further, yep. Okay, so we will move on, we can come back if anyone wants to revisit street frontage.
Off the house?
Yep.
The lot 65 feet wide, the house can only be 45 feet wide.
Correct. Yep, that's what the pictures are for that I pass out, but I'll walk us through that in a moment, so that you can...
We, we have neighborhoods already that have gone through subdivision approval in, I'm going to say, recent past, within the last 10, 15 years. And the skinnier lots, the lots that get approved at 65 feet, they typically spin the house sideways, so it's longer, they're narrow, kind of has a garage in front, and then the front door next to the garage type of thing. So they, they just orientate the house a little bit different for, for the skinnier lots, typically. Don't have to, but typically.
Yeah, it's kind of like one of your pictures here.
Right.
I didn't get a picture.
Oh, sorry, Jamie. Pass Crystal's actually down.
I'm just kidding, I'm fine.
Yeah. The next page of that eight-and-a-half-by-eleven is just keeping the portions of the code that were the same between SFR and residential development, and just keeping those the same with a few minor, just clerical revisions here. So I don't think anyone's going to have an issue with that as far as keeping those groundwater, watershed performance standards. This is where we talk about the uniform setback here, so that's all part of the ordinance For some reason, our current code references a residential development overlay zone, which does not actually exist, so I'm proposing we strike that language. And then there's just some typos up here, but otherwise, the section of the code remains the same. And then the portion that's sort of more discussion around would be the development standards. So within that table, there's the option, we currently have an option for a density bonus, and the only provision that you, that changes in that density bonus is that you're able to increase from six units per net acre to 10 units per net acre, with all else remaining the same. I am proposing, in order to sort of meet the demand of the housing market, as well as LD 2003, that we also adjust some of those other numbers that would allow for various residential structures to actually be able to be built. So with development review, which would mean it would become before this Board, the Planning Board, I'm proposing there's a number of changes that would increase the density. So keeping the same 10 dwelling units per net acre option, having a minimum lot size decreased to 6,000 square feet, that the maximum building height may be increased to 50 feet for residential structures having two or more dwelling units within the primary structure. So that would be either duplex or three units. 50 feet of height would allow for basically three levels of living space. So if you picture, and you can pull out your pictures, a normal single-family house generally is about 33 to 35 feet tall, you've got two floors of living space and an attic. Potentially, if you were to add a third floor to that, that was a livable space, you'd probably come in at about 45 to 48 feet high, so I'm proposing that we increase that to 50 feet. So that would allow for three full floors of development. Again, that has to come before you, so, and any unit doesn't need to have all three of these provisions, so they could be on a larger lot, or they could have fewer dwelling units per net acre, but they may propose a taller building. I think what is important to keep in mind is that it doesn't always work, the math just doesn't work, when you tried to fit units on a parcel. So I found, as best I could, a parcel in our downtown area. This is what the pictures are, so we'll switch over to that to help you visualize what this might look like. So this is the lot where the Sanford Games and Collectibles building is, so it's right next door to the new T-Mobile building. I just chose this lot because I didn't really feel comfortable showing someone's personal house, and also, this lot was as close as I could get to 6,000 square feet. So if we're proposing that the density bonus allow for 6,000 square feet, this is like the kind of lot that you can envision. This is what the front of that building looks like, if you can picture the size of that This obviously is in the urban zone, so it's not actually affected by this ordinance, but it's just... This obviously is in the urban zone, so it's not actually affected by this ordinance, but it's just, uh, better to visualize with an actual building. So, um, if you were to look at this, if you wanted to get down to a six thousand square foot lot, you'd still have to come before the board, even for a single-family house. Um, and when you do that math out for the net density, units per acre, it's seven, oops. Right? So not only are they, for a single-family house, not only are they over the basic six units per net acre, but they're also requesting a smaller lot size at six thousand square feet. So that would have to come before you. That's up for discussion whether or not you want to even review those kinds of projects. When you go up to two units, so if someone's requesting to build a duplex on a six thousand square foot lot, they're now at fourteen units per acre. And obviously that math doesn't work. So the only way someone would even be allowed to build a duplex on a six thousand square foot lot is if there's some other lot within this development. It would have to be part of a larger development. And they would have to have the net acreage of ten units per lot. So they're already over just by putting a duplex on this size lot. So you, so you can imagine like this type of development is not going to be able, this is the worst-case scenario, right? Of, of trying to think of, I don't want a three-story building next to my single-family home in my traditional neighborhood. Well, it wouldn't happen because they'd have to have a large enough lot to meet the ten dwelling units per net acre. In order to have that size lot, it's basically in the areas of our current RD zone where we're kind of waiting for development to happen. Like that's what the RD zone is designed for right now is to allow for a larger basically master planned community to come in. And we'd still basically only be allowing that, that kind of development in one of those new planned communities. Because they'd have to preserve enough green space to offset the density of the parcels.
Can I jump in with a question real quick?
Yes.
Could a developer buy two lots, combine them, and then do?
They could.
They could buy two ratty houses or whatever and tear them down and combine lots and then build?
Yes. So potentially that would work out better for them, um, in the math of building a home, that it's easier to build a three-story building. But, but again, probably that whole second lot would have to be green space in order to offset the density. They wouldn't be able to build two three-story buildings.
Oh, but in that scenario, you could have a three-story building in a neighborhood surrounded by a single or two-story houses.
Yep, you could. Or we could write some sort of provision that that doesn't meet in the, uh, you know, the reasons that the planning board shall accept.
Yeah, so those were, that's, that's getting right to what I was considering was, you know, in your example, you know, you'd put a three-story building, there's nothing around it. Yes, it is an urban setting, but everything there is a single-story slab-on grade and would kind of stick out like a sore thumb across the street.
In our current urban zone, um, there's a pres, I can't remember the exact verbiage, but there's a provision that says, um, it has to fit into the character of the neighborhood or something.
Were you here with Beaver Hill?
What, what about Beaver Hill?
Beaver Hill, they were trying to put apartments up there and they were turned down because all the houses on that street were single-family.
So I think we could copy the provision from the urban zone that says something about character of the neighborhood.
Yeah.
And put it under another one of those, we could add it, number, number seven.
Because those are things that I would like to start seeing in some of these ordinance changes. If we're gonna be given the purview to make some of these decisions. Right now, I think we make a lot of conditional decisions without any guidance. So it's kind of like, yeah, here's a conditional use, so you can approve it if you want, but we don't really have any, anything to gauge it against. So having some provisions that allow us to, to levy those requirements will be very helpful for us.
Yes. So in the ordinance version, there's a list of currently six items
Yep.
that I've included. The overall layout of the street slots and buildings creates a neighborhood which has an urban character with a pedestrian orientation. These are borrowed from the current RD. So anything that's not underlined is current ordinance language. Buildings are oriented to the streets in an urban fashion with buildings fronting on the streets. Parking and service areas are located to the side and rear of the buildings. The layout provides for varying lot frontages and side setbacks. Provisions are made for sidewalks or other pedestrian ways linking the neighborhood. And then I've added for good measure, basically a repeat of the, um, proposed development will be connected to both public water and public sewer. So if they're going to try and increase the density in this small version of density, they still have to be on water and sewer.
Wouldn't it be just sewer?
Well, we could make it, we could make it.
I mean, just to be consistent.
So I, I said that currently we're not required to tie into public water, but I'm not against retiring into public water. When you get into these small lots, um, especially in an urban environment, the, the there were two reasons a hundred years ago, water districts were formed. One was to provide fire protection and two was to provide clean drinking water. If you had wells drilled in a very urban environment, it's not necessarily gonna be the best quality of water.
Right.
So I, I'm not against saying you have to tie into public water.
And I, I wasn't saying that we should allow it, but I was more just, just to be consistent, but I'm good with, I'm good with time, you know, requiring the
Yeah, I don't know that there's many areas in these zones that aren't already served by water.
Yeah.
Um, but we probably don't want someone drilling a well on a six thousand square foot lot, so.
We, we have more portions of the city serviced by water than sewer. Uh, water flows uphill where sewer doesn't. So we have a lot more areas in town that have public water, but not public sewer. So I'm thinking, I'm not gonna say all, cause that would be a farce, but I'm thinking most of the SFR zone and RD zone have public water within reason.
So we could add on this, onto this list, maybe towards the top, that it must fall into the character of the neighborhood as well. That would be for an infill lot. So for some development that's coming in and has a large parcel and is ready to master plan it, there's nothing to compare to. They shouldn't really be tied to the neighboring lots if they're kind of an insular community in my mind.
Does that address your concern?
I'm saying with a ma, I guess you're saying with a master plan, they could come in and do something different.
A master plan would be its own community then. So it would, it would fit into the character of the neighborhood because the, if they bought enough land where they're creating their own little neighborhood, they're their own little neighborhood. So it wouldn't be you buy two lots and might squeak a two or three family off it because you bought two lots side by side. It would be you buy a whole block and now you create its own little neighborhood that will have to be, compete with itself.
Potentially you could have three-story buildings in that law.
Again, we're not talking a lot. If, if we're, if we're gonna get to the density where we're building those bigs of buildings, you're buying more than two lots. Again, the density still applies here. So it's, if you buy two lots side by side, you, you might be able to get a two-family out of it. But the density's still not gonna be there for, we have a lot of tiny lots, like less than five thousand square feet currently. So you might have to buy three or four of those to get up to enough landmass to get to density. I think what she meant, and correct me if I'm wrong, by master plan, a master plan isn't on two lots or three lots. It's you buy a whole block or a whole block of blocks and you, you create a village within a village.
Because they'd need that much space in order to basically have a park that would offset the net density that's required. Cause we're still requiring, uh, at a minimum, ten units per net acre. So, so you can see in the, at the bottom of the pictures, that table there. You know, with a, just with a duplex, you're already at fourteen units per acre, so it wouldn't work.
So that much large acreage available in the SFR zone?
It's, uh, primarily in the RD zone. We have a zoning map over there on the wall. The RD zone is the, the blue. The, the RD zone has, um, the RD zone was created because there was large acreage semi-close to utilities that, that we, we could possibly have dense development. Single-family residential zone, um, are primarily smaller lots. I, I've seen some like fifteen, twenty thousand-ish square foot lots, which is still relatively small when we're talking the densities we're talking. But, but no, there are not many large parcels. Um, and the large parcels that are there are, are there because they are sensitive areas that can't be built on anyways.
You know, the, uh, well, they wanna put a solar farm on one of them. And the one by the hospital, the guy had to pump sewer up and he wouldn't pay for the pump station.
Those are two RD lots that you're referring to, yes. And again, eventually, um, the cost of putting in the infrastructure will become a viable option. Land and, and real estate markets are, are going up by the, by the minute. So five years ago, when they were proposing that development near the hospital, the, the math didn't work. But five years ago, you could sell a house lot for forty thousand. Today you can sell a house lot for eighty thousand. Ten years from now, we might be able to sell it for a hundred and twenty. Eventually, we're not making new land and, uh, and the values are gonna, what's left is gonna become more and more valuable.
I think it's also good to keep in mind that because if they're requesting this change, it comes before you, it also means that all of the a butters will be noticed. So the neighbors can show up and say, we don't think this fits the neighborhood, and that makes your job easier. I've also been in meetings where neighbors show up and say like, yes, we wanna have more neighbors. Like, we're fine with the third floor. In my case, like, uh, I've been in meetings where they were trying to put solar panels on the front of the house, which were, it wasn't allowed, you know? And neighbors stood up and said, we don't mind the look of solar panels. We want, I want my kids to grow up in a neighborhood where they understand climate change. And so they, you know, the neighbors stood up in favor of the requested variance, basically.
This, I couldn't see a scenario in Sanford where people would show up and say, I want more neighbors. I guess it's possible.
This is pretty radical thinking. Um, when Erin first started working on this, I sat down with her and said, this, this is gonna be a tough sell. There's a lot of people that, that enjoy their single-family house in their single-family neighborhood and, and a lot of them, their, their parents or grandparents bought or built the house decades ago. So LD 2003 is, um, is kind of forcing municipalities to think a little bit bigger picture. So this, this isn't gonna be an easy discussion when it comes to, to, I don't want that next to my house. This is a little bit
If it's permitted, we can't turn it down.
We can't turn it down, but again, the section she's on right now, we're putting standards in place to make it so when they're asking for this density bonus, if it's, if, if they're proposing to build a, I mean, if you do a flat roof, you could potentially get five floors on a fifty-foot structure. A normal floor is eight foot with a foot floor joists between it. So you, if you propose a flat roof, you could, you could get up to five stories. But again, if you propose a five-story building next to a neighborhood of single-family houses that are mostly one-story and a couple one and a half story capes, it's not gonna fit the single-family character, it's not gonna fit the, the character of the neighborhood that we're, I think now proposing to put as one of these requirements. So I think that provision, um, in the urban zone, there's no density bonus, uh, no density minimums, maximums. The only tool I have is that the, the building you're proposing must fit in the, the neighborhood, the character of the neighborhood. So I've used that tool, um, as my pretty much only tool on people trying to do crazy things in the urban zone. So I, I would highly recommend it's, it's put into this section.
I know with Beaver Hill, they went down, that was up on Elm Street. They went down the street and found a bunch of apartment houses, you know, so, uh, can there be a distance put on that? Character of the neighborhood, what's, what, what, what's our definition of a neighborhood?
It's, um, I should, I should let Erin talk here. I, I don't know of a distance. It's, it's hard. And Beaver Hill's a, a good example of, of what could go wrong or what could come up with this. Because it's the corner of Beaver Hill, Elm Street, Payne Street, all that, that area, uh, which is a very, um, eclectic mix of single families and very large apartment buildings. So in, in reality, that, that neighborhood is already a mix of apartment buildings and single families. Now, if you're the single-family homeowner next to this place, you're gonna say, well, there's three single families in a row. But, um, I
A lot of people came out that didn't want it there.
Oh, I, I remember. I was proud of that.
It was the court. They won, but I don't know, the guy went out of business.
He, he went bankrupt, but, um, we're, we're actually talking with another developer about that lot as we speak. They are not proposing nearly as dense development.
Well, we have, we already have a comparison when it comes to uniform setbacks. You can't choose the house that fits your want. You gotta choose the houses that are closed. So something along those lines.
John came back with a bunch of smaller apartments along that, that looked like the other houses on that street, but that never went anywhere.
Yeah, like in the example pictures of houses, I specifically was looking for a, a quadplex where, I mean, you kind of can't tell the difference between the single-family house and the quadplex here. Right? So like there, that's the kind of density that we're probably advocating for the most. Um, and I mean, right now, those, the, that kind of development would still require the same amount of parking ratios per bedroom that we're requiring. You know, there's other provisions, but if it fits the character of the neighborhood and it, it allows for three more units than would normally be built, that really does meet the intent of LD 2003 and really does push development in our growth zone, which remember preserves development from happening out in the rural area, which is what we're trying to avoid.
That's what I was gonna mention. I mean, the state's not gonna strike that down. If we say, you know, the proposal's up and it doesn't fit the character of that neighborhood, the state's not gonna challenge that and say it doesn't fit the, uh, the intent of the law?
You know, I don't think it says anything about that in the guidance. Character of the neighborhood wasn't really mentioned.
I didn't hear the question.
Oh, if, if, if we put a provision in there, it must meet the character of the neighborhood if, if the LD 2003 police would flag that as it not being.
So the, the state gave us, um, gave us guidelines, but they can't take away homeowners authority completely. So first off, there, there really is no such thing as LD 2003 police yet.
I've heard mixed reports. I don't know.
There, there very well might be, um, a developer that comes to small-town Maine, anywhere. I'm not gonna say Sanford, but any, any municipality in Maine and feels that the rules do not meet the intent and could possibly try to challenge. But I think, especially with the, the changes we're making converting SFR to RD with the allowances for density bonus with, with, with restrictions, I think we would win every day. I think we are being more than fair, um, allowing, the, the, the whole purpose of LD 2003 is to allow more housing to be built to try to make it more affordable. Um, and I think everything that has been proposed is, um, at least if not better than what was anticipated.
Beg for forgiveness.
Well, we're not, the good thing is, we're not here trying to do just the minimum.
Correct.
This is a, this is a good faith attempt to meet the, meet the goal.
Right. I, I agree. I mean, city of Sanford made a decision a decade or so ago to become a city. Part of that decision is, is density. Um, cities are dense. And there, there will always be people that, that don't want to live in a dense environment and there will still be parts of Sanford that are not. But there will be parts of Sanford that are. Um, in order for a city to grow and flourish, you, you need density. Now, I'm a, I'm a country fan. Um, I, I live out in the country and that's what I choose to do. We still have parts of Sanford. You can live out in the country and live in peace and harmony on your forty acres. And if you choose, um, we're not taking that away. Um, we're just saying that, um, we need to provide, um, affordable housing for people. And we're, we're trying to amend our ordinances to get to that goal.
We're kind of ahead of, ahead of the curve, cause we already passed an ordinance for ADU, right?
So Sanford's
I think most cities in Maine had an ADU ordinance in place already.
So Maine is a very unique place and that's what makes it so we all live here. So, Maine is a very unique place, and that's what makes it so we all live here. But, Sanford is actually in a pretty good position for LD 2003. As we have discussed, our ordinances really aren't that far off. The amendments that are being proposed to you guys are relatively minor. It, it seems radical because we're eliminating the term "single-family residential zone." And that's gonna, that's gonna come hard to some people.
Oh, yeah.
So, it seems radical, but we're still keeping our single-family residential neighborhoods with density. If Erin came to us and said, "I think we should abolish density and allow ten units per acre," I don't think this would make it pass the paper she wrote it on, because that would be a very, very hard sell, not only, I think, to you guys, but to the, to the council and to the citizens at large. So, we're not proposing that. We're proposing minor tweaks that probably won't have many impacts on a lot of the neighborhoods that we've tried to protect this long, and they're gonna say, "We're not trying to protect them anymore," but in, in reality, we're keeping our density, so we are still protecting them. In my opinion.
Does Sanford have a short-term rental ordinance?
City Council did pass a short-term rental ordinance. We now have a short-term rental ordinance in effect.
Just wondering if people would do these ADUs and stuff for...
We have ADUs being constructed, as we speak, for the purpose of short-term rentals, yes.
Wow.
More people to visit our local businesses and restaurants.
People from Oregon come over and they got an Airbnb down on Elm Street, and it's like, "What? In Sanford?"
Yeah, there's quite a few of them.
Yeah.
And, to be honest with you, most of them live in peace and harmony in the neighborhoods. We have one Airbnb, and I'm not gonna mention specifics, but it is a problem child, because it's a larger building and easier for lots of people to come into our single-family neighborhood and, and have...
A party.
Larger gatherings that are loud and noxious. But, out of, out of the last few years where Airbnbs have become very popular, the codes office has only received complaints on one.
They have to get inspected every year like an apartment?
We do yearly inspections. We now limit occupancy load on Airbnbs. They actually can't be in, which will have to be an amendment, because they can't be in the single-family residential zone. So, we're gonna have to amend that ordinance as well. Note to self. So, we, we have put limitations to try to protect the, the neighborhoods we're trying to protect.
So, I'll just throw this out there. I mean, it's not really the ordinance, but we keep saying affordable housing. This doesn't do anything to create affordable housing.
Well, so, there's, many arguments have been made that the, you know, supply and demand char...
Increase the inventory, maybe you get a chance to, but...
But, there is also another, a whole nother provision that I need to draft and bring to you, all that is in affordable housing, basically density bonus, and we haven't tackled that yet. But, it allows for two-point-five times... Should we get into it now? I don't know.
I, we can briefly discuss it. I don't necessarily wanna cloud this discussion with that discussion.
Yeah, I apologize.
No, it's good.
I just wanted to throw it out there because we keep saying it, the state keeps saying it.
So, you are correct. This law was passed for affordable housing. I now say the word "affordable" and "housing" do not combine. But, the thought process is, is that if there is more inventory, it will drive the prices down. The thought process is that right now, you can't buy a house for under three-hundred grand, because right now in Sanford, there's only five houses on the market, or whatever. So, the, the demand is high and the supply is low. So, part of the thought process when this law was passed was, if we create more availability, that will force the values to come back down to where it's affordable. And, and again, I, I, I don't feel anything is affordable right now.
It's not working, because people just keep moving in and buying them.
So, eventually, it's, it's, short-term, it probably won't lower the prices much. But, realistically speaking, everything takes time. So, these laws get input into place. We're supposed to have them in effect by January one. I think we're in pretty good shape to get most of them in effect by January one. Most communities are trying, but probably won't get there. But then, then developers have to start crunching their numbers, trying to find available lots, come through the planning board processes, get financing. Part of the program that she's gonna breach on is, is the, the true affordable mechanism, which is, comes into housing authority-type funds, which is then capped by income and, and all of that. So, that portion of it is, I think, on the short-term, where you might find quicker affordable housing. But, this, this is a, a long-time answer to a short-term problem. It will take years to start seeing dwelling units come online from these law changes. Nothing happens overnight, especially when it comes to larger developments. Larger developments, developers have to find capital stacks that, that sometimes takes years just to get enough investors on board to, to say, "I'm gonna build it." We, we've approved a lot of apartment buildings in, in Sanford that are waiting for investors to, to give them that last million dollars to, to be able to bite the bullet. So, this, this isn't something that's gonna happen overnight. You'll see some two, two-units, some duplexes come online quickly, because, to be honest with you, it doesn't cost a whole lot more to build a two-family than it does a single-family. You, you add a couple bathrooms and a kitchen. So, for, for thirty thousand bucks, you can change your house from a single-family to a two-family. You, you probably will see some single-family conversions to two-families with the law change, but the bigger development takes time.
I kinda mentioned this, we kinda touched on this a little bit in our last discussion, but I'm kind of a proponent of homeownership, and unfortunately, I don't see that this is really gonna help that. It's just, it's creating a lot more rentals, multi-family units, but it really isn't doing... If you want people to come into Sanford and put down their roots and start a family, they're gonna stay for a while, they probably want to own a home.
So, what I foresee it is a lot of, like, two families, maybe three families, where the owner does live in one of the units, and then the one unit, or maybe two units that's rented, helps pay the mortgage. So, and in those cases, again, the codes office has a rental licensing program. The reality of it is, is owner-occupied structures, I'm not gonna say a hundred percent, but a large percentage of the time are better maintained than absentee landlords, as I call them. So, I think we, you, you can't, you can't, don't say you can't. It's hard to make money on a two-family property. If you build it, you, you, it's hard to make the numbers work. So, two families, investors don't build a lot of them just, just as pure two-family rentals, because by the time all the numbers add up, the numbers aren't there. But, it definitely helps somebody getting out of college, can't afford a four-hundred-thousand-dollar house on their own, but they, if they, if they buy a four-hundred-thousand-dollar two-family maybe, and that, that person's paying fourteen-hundred dollars a month, that then makes it so that mortgage is affordable. And it is owner-occupied property, which typically is maintained almost as well as an owner-occupied single-family.
There's also not, not really a way for us to write an ordinance that requires someone to own the house.
Right.
You know? So, I hear what you're saying, and I think, again, just the more supply that we can have on hand, the more likely that they'll become affordable for, for ownership. Which brings us back to the ordinance.
Sorry for that.
That's all right. Okay, so, I have written down that will add some provision of matching the character of the neighborhood. I'm just gonna have to look up what is in existence already, so that we can match that Any other concerns here, or do you feel like this ordinance could get passed to the zoning subcommittee?
Yeah, I don't, don't see anything else that...
And just for clarification, ordinance as presented with the addition of "must fit in with the character of the neighborhood"? Is that in agreement?
Yes, absolutely.
Does the city attorney look at these?
We have them look at them after you guys do this. Before it gets formally adopted, I do run it through the city attorney, yes.
I don't think he knows anything about LD 2003, but...
He might by now. I don't know.
I, I've actually talked to our attorney about LD 2003. Well, one of our attorneys, our, our firm has many, but the one primarily that we use for land use, he, he agreed that our ordinances were actually in semi-decent shape at the start. And while I haven't talked about everything we're talking about tonight with him, he was in agreement with the theme where we were going with the provisions to meet the requirements.
Okay. Can I ask a question about, does provisions are made for sidewalks or other pedestrian ways linking neighborhood, or linking the neighborhood? What does that look like?
The RD zone, which is where those provisions were originally written, was designed to encourage, basically, large development with lots of green space. So, the, the thought process was, you would have multiple buildings on the lot, kinda like the, the proposal from King Real Estate, fifteen oh at Main Street, that came for preliminary a couple months ago. It's coming back for final in a while, in a few weeks. That's, that's like an RD-designed neighborhood. We have multiple buildings, slightly different character of the buildings, linked with a sidewalk, typically have trails and stuff through them. So, it's, again, the RD zone was almost trying to create a, what did Beth call it? A hamlet?
Sure.
But, I, I call it a village within a, a village within a village. You're trying to create its own neighborhood.
Because the reason for my question is based off of a couple meetings ago, when we were sort of at odds when it came to the discussion of sidewalks. And I know that this, that applicant was, like, privately-owned land, et cetera, but would, would slash could this tie in to that same discussion? And not that I wanna rehash sidewalks and spend a million hours on that, but just to put a feeler out there as part of this discussion that we're having.
Yes, so, my memory is that that sidewalk provision is part of the subdivision ordinance, actually. And so, we're not proposing changes currently to the subdivision ordinance, other than basically striking single-family residential zone and replacing it with the RD zone. So, I was trying to find that portion here. That conversation would still apply. So, a subdivision, that's a major subdivision, if I'm remembering the ordinance correctly, requires sidewalks currently on both sides of the street that are concrete, and it provides you, the planning board, the provision, to reduce that to one side of the street, no sides of the street, some other provision of a path elsewhere, and also a different material for the sidewalk, other than...
So, it's a subdivision with a street, then? Because, yes, look at some, some of your examples you've talked about, or even what Lenny brought up, where you have two, you take two lots and you make it one, and you put a prop, put a house on it. I hope we're not gonna require them to put a sidewalk on their property. But, just, doesn't go anywhere, right? It stays on one property.
I don't even know if that's a subdivision. They've, like, combined the lots, not subdivided it.
And again, this is only if they're asking for the density bonus.
What's that?
This, these provisions are only if you're asking for the density bonus. So, if, if they're not trying to get the, the density down to one unit, ten units per acre, these provisions here don't, don't allow. Now, if, just back to your question, if you buy two lots and you try to build a six-unit building on it, currently, our ordinance would call that a subdivision. Future, down the road, we're gonna have a discussion over, do we want to continue calling what I call internal subdivisions, apartment buildings subdivisions. State statute allows us to make a choice of whether we call that a subdivision or not, if we have a site plan ordinance that is equally as restrictive, and we do. So, maybe, not, not a hundred percent, but primarily. So, we're not gonna cloud, muddy the waters tonight. But, down the road, we might discuss whether we want to continue calling apartment buildings subdivisions, subdivisions, because by state statute, we don't have to.
Did you buy two lots and combine them?
Yep.
Into one?
Yep.
So, that would...
That's not a subdivision.
Right.
But, if you then try to put a three-unit or more on it, it is. Currently, under our ordinance.
I mean, technically speaking, I think your example is already in existence today of, if someone tried to subdivide one single lot, it's still a subdivision. Our, the ordinance is written, "Sidewalk shall be installed within all subdivisions within areas designated as growth areas in the comprehensive plan." So, I don't know that we're even currently requiring, well, one parcel that's split into two to put a sidewalk in front of it, but we could.
And I, I, I was not present for that meeting. I was, I was home ill, but I did watch it via Zoom. I would say after that discussion, which I thought was a great discussion, I, I think it might be prudent at some point to amend and give more guidance on you guys as the board, on how you make the decision to waive, because it was, it was a split board, and I think if there was more guidance, it would have been easier for you guys to, to try to make a, a decision on whether we should allow one, or allow a path behind the houses instead of a sidewalk in front of the houses, or, or not anything. Right, right now, there was basically two reasons why you could waive it, but neither one of them well-defined. The subdivision ordinance really hasn't been amended in about eighteen years. So, it's, it's, when, when we hired Erin, I, I said, "Be prepared, we, we need some help."
I think that project really did resemble a subdivision. You're talking about multiple structures along a street.
Yeah.
This isn't like splitting, this isn't putting one big structure on a big lawn.
So, so, the ordinance as written, subdivision ordinance, does give you guys the ability to waive. It didn't give a lot of guidance on that ability, so there was a little bit of, there, there was a lot of discussion on that. So, I think, I think the solution to that problem is to, at some point in the future, look at that provision and maybe come up with some better guidance.
Yeah, and that's what I was referring to earlier with the conditional uses and the waivers and all this. I mean, this isn't the first time we've got to a point where we've been at odds with the request, and we don't really have anything to stand on to really help us make that decision. So, so, to go back to the neighborhood feel addition, I think we, and speak up if you don't agree with me, I don't think we want that to just be a requirement for the bonus, but for the whole thing, right? So, if we're gonna start increasing, you know, we don't... Am I, am I speaking out of turn?
I guess that's what I thought it was for the entire thing, not just the density bonus.
Okay.
That's what I thought.
Well, I, I thought so too, but then we were, we focused on this section when, when we were discussing it, I wanted to...
I think you guys just need to clarify if you want it applicable to, to everything in this zone, or just the ones...
That's what I would like.
Yeah. Okay. So, not under the density bonus, but within that development standards section?
Yes.
And then, just to be clear, I, I referenced the urban zone with that provision, so those don't have to come to you guys to make that decision. Those come at permit issuance through the codes office. Are you comfortable with that? Because if not, every permit in the RD zone would have to come to planning board. So, just to, just to be clear, do you maybe wanna have... So, just to be clear, do you maybe want to have it so it's under the normal provision, which is for permit issuance on non-density bonus, and then kick it up to, it has to be you guys for density bonus, or, again, just a thought, just for clarification?
I thought that's what Aaron had mentioned earlier. He was talking about a density bonus, and I thought that's what you were talking about earlier, was coming to the planning board.
If it's under the density bonus, it would have to, yes. If it's not under the density bonus, it could be under our provision code or planning department.
That's not what I'm talking about. That's a different provision.
Do you want me to just find it in the code?
I don't think I have an issue with...
It's in the urban zone.
Staff or you like that?
It's in the urban zone.
Because we're probably not going to get many that you could do where you're going to impact the neighborhood without the density bonus.
Correct.
Just because you still need the density, you still need the land.
Right, I mean, generally speaking, if they're meeting every other provision, then it does meet the character of the neighborhood. I mean, we don't have an architectural review board, so I can't just say like, that's an ugly architectural style, and it doesn't meet the character of the neighborhood. Like, we're not architects, so I don't know that we have...
It is a fairly loose terminology that there would be limited situations where I could flat-out refuse. It would be, you have an entire block of single-family houses 10 feet tall, and then somebody wants to come in with a 50-foot tall house. I could easily say that doesn't meet the character of the neighborhood.
Well, that would be a density bonus that I'd have to come in.
Right.
So it would only be if they were building a 35-foot tall house on a lot that was already 7,500 square feet or more. Like, if they'd have to meet all of the basic requirements, and then I don't see a situation where that doesn't also match the existing character of the neighborhood, I guess.
Do you still have the option of kicking it up to the planning board?
Always.
We always have the option to kick it up to the planning board, yes.
I don't trust you guys.
Willie Walker comes in.
And really, over the last year, I've kicked five projects, I think, up to you guys that I didn't feel comfortable reviewing at a lower level. I think you guys are a wealth of knowledge and do help shape the future. Well, you weren't on at the time.
Yeah, no, no. None of this has anything to do with me.
So, no, I actually have kicked several projects that could have been reviewed at a lower level because I wanted your opinion.
I mean, I feel like the flip side is that potentially we get a couple of developments in where they're hitting these triggers, and you guys got tired of reviewing them, and you might get used to the ordinance and even relax those even further. Or maybe not, like, it could be, like Jamie said, it could be four years before we see a developer come in with something that really pushes the envelope.
And on the flip side, we might get one that comes in at some point in the future, whether that's four years or 40 years from now, that completely me nor Aaron or anybody else thought of, and we're like, whoa, we gotta fix something the other way.
Right.
This is our first stab at this. That doesn't mean that two months from now, we're sitting around the office and we reread it, and we're like, oh my God, we forgot about this. And then the next meeting, we're saying, we gotta make a change. I don't expect us to get this perfect the first time. I actually think it's going to be a work in progress with, we've got to remember that we have a comp plan update coming. With the comp plan update is potentially a major comprehensive rewrite of every zone we have. And that's in the semi-near future. So this discussion will be had again in the future. Right now, we're just trying to do a stopgap until we get a comp plan.
The last two points I wanted to make is that the end of that development standard zone, I added in red the two portions that are currently in the single-family residential zone but weren't showing up in the RD zone, which, as Jamie mentioned, was the option to reduce the side and rear setbacks for an accessory structure to two feet, and the use of the front yard just, I'm not sure why those weren't included in the RD zone already, but it seems like it would make sense to continue them in the future. It's essentially saying you can't park on your grass, and you can put a shed within two feet of a lot line, which is already allowed right now in the single family. So we're just actually allowing more area to have that.
So this is currently in single-family?
Correct.
But we're just going to bring it over when we migrate, when we merge the two?
Right.
Crystal, did you have something?
Oh, sorry, I don't like being on Zoom, because I feel like there's like this little delay, so I apologize if I'm interrupting. Would it make sense, under the section of use of front yard, that the motor vehicles must be with current registration, so you don't have, for lack of a better term, a junkyard sitting in your driveway? Like, all vehicles must be of, like, usable, if you will? And I only bring that up because it, reading this actually reminded me of the, and I know it's part of my deed of like my neighborhood, but every vehicle has to have a parking space. So even if I were to bring in a, like a trailer, the trailer has to have its own, like a, I don't know, like a tow hitch trailer, would have to have its own designated parking spot, and it would have to have a valid up-to-date registration. And part of that is to permit the collection of basically junk vehicles, thus decreasing property values, but also keeping up appearances. And I just wanted to throw that out there.
We have a different provision in code that doesn't allow junk vehicles. It does not include trailers. The definition of motor vehicle, it has to have a motor. So our current requirements allow you to have an unregistered trailer, but not unregistered vehicles. So we already have a different section of ordinance that pertains to that.
Excellent.
Excuse me.
All right. Any other questions from the board? To make this official, we have to open the public hearing.
Oh, great.
We kind of did this backwards, but that's all right.
Sorry.
So to clear the public hearing open, I don't know if there's anybody on Zoom except for Crystal. So anybody who wants to speak in support of this ordinance change? All right, anybody who would like to speak in opposition to the ordinance change? Anybody who would like to make a comment about the ordinance change? All right, clear the public hearing closed. All right, so do we have a motion to...
Motion to send it to council.
As presented, with the modifications discussed tonight.
I second that.
All right, any more discussion?
No, I think we've beaten this to death already.
Okay. Kyle?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
And I am yes. All right.
Can I make a quick comment?
On what?
That...
No?
It's a general comment of just saying that a lot of time and effort went into this, and it shows. And all of those who had hands in this, which I know Aaron had a huge part of it, really great job, like, super awesome job. And I think we're definitely headed in the right direction, especially for, if you want to consider this the first, like, rough draft, this looks really good. So I just wanted to say, good job to everybody.
Thanks, appreciate the boost of confidence.
All right. Jamie, you have a planning director's report?
So we actually, that was only part one.
I've got another one.
Oh!
There are so many ordinances coming at you.
So we have more LD 2003?
ADU, LD...
Oh, we probably should have held off on the public hearing.
You could reopen it.
We'll reopen, we'll open the public hearing for the next part.
Yeah, there are different ordinance changes, so it makes sense to do them separately. Basically, we, I think at the initial conversations of LD 2003, thought we were going to be presenting you like the 10 changes that we would need all at once, so you could consider it as one, and it's just too much work, basically, and it would take all night to go, or more, multiple nights, obviously, so that's why we're breaking it up. So we have two tonight, we'll have more in the future, then we're going to try and get them into zoning subcommittee and get those through, so it's kind of a continuous cycle. We did start the conversation on accessory dwelling units at the last planning board meeting, we did not make a motion. Our current ordinance is fairly within the bounds of the LD 2003 requests. The portion that is maybe still up for discussion is the ownership stipulation. So currently, our ordinance requires that either the primary structure or the accessory dwelling unit be owner-occupied. That is recommended to be struck based on just the provision that we are actually trying to increase housing and not restrict it. And so having an owner-occupied requirement does therefore restrict how many accessory dwelling units, and therefore how much housing is available. So the point of LD 2003 is to increase housing, and so we're addressing all of those areas where there are restrictions in place. The other item up for discussion is the total size.
They're both rented, they both have to be inspected every year, correct?
Any rental, I won't lie and say we inspect every rental every year, we do not have time for it, but they are put in an inspection schedule, we will get to them as frequently as possible, or if we get complaints, they get inspected immediately.
Yeah, if you have bad actors.
But currently, we have over 900 rentals licensed, and it would be impossible to do all 900 of them every year. Remembering that the city now works a four-day work week.
What?
Four times, Crystal, since last fall.
Lucky.
We actually, we've done our one year.
It's 40 years either way you slice it, 40 hours.
Forty hours, oh yeah, well, yeah. But still, 40 sounds better than five.
And in reality, there are still several members that still work five, but the building is closed on Fridays.
So, sorry that this ordinance doesn't have a nice and neat side-by-side table, but I, as we presented it last time, the front page of the accessory dwelling unit portion of ordinance is what I am proposing to replace in full the current ordinance, just because the current ordinance isn't, it's a little verbose in that there's a lot of language in there that doesn't need to be in there. It doesn't address everything that LD 2003 is requiring, and I think it would just be nice to reword it to match some of the other, or most of the other ordinance language. So I've added some provisions in here that, you know, the ADUs must conform to all underlying zoning regulations, so setback standards, stormwater standards, subdivision, floodplain, all those will still apply. LD 2003 is requiring that we allow ADUs, which we already do. They're also requiring that there's no additional parking required for an ADU. So those two items are not up for discussion. And then the things that I have added are that we would allow an ADU on a parcel that has a single-family dwelling unit, a two-family dwelling unit, or a multifamily dwelling building, multifamily building, that's what I was supposed to edit, sorry. Multifamily building having less than five individual dwelling units. Jamie has a question.
If we are eliminating the provision where it has to be owner-occupied, what is the difference between an accessory dwelling unit and a dwelling unit?
The size.
So we're still limiting the size?
Well, we've also altered that, so that is part of the discussion. We're currently changing, in this version, limiting to 1,000 square feet, or 40% of the living area, whichever is greater. The current standard says whichever is smaller. So in a previous discussion, we had talked about potentially there's a very large house, they want to convert their, I don't know, carriage house, barn, garage into an accessory dwelling unit, but they would be limited to 1,000 square feet, which maybe their garage is already larger than 1,000 square feet, in which case the 40% stipulation would be in place, and if an accessory dwelling unit is only 40% of the living area of a primary dwelling unit, it's still, in scale, would be the argument. Can only ever be 40% of the size of the principal dwelling unit. So like Jamie's example is if you now currently have a, say, 1,200-square-foot house, you're limited to only 30, 300 square feet, is that math?
Like 400.
400 square feet, because that's what, 40% of, no, I think it's 300. 40% of a 1,200-square-foot house.
Half would be 600. It's like 450.
Yep. Which is not, that's more of a tiny house, which we have a whole other ordinance for tiny houses. Right, so for the amount of single-family homes that we currently have in existence that are close to in existence 1,000 square feet, they're very limited on the size of their potential ADU, in which case it's not...
But in this provision, I could have a 1,200-square-foot cape, and then add a 1,000-square-foot accessory apartment? So then what is the difference between that and a two-family?
Parking.
Right, I don't have to have parking.
We're not allowed to?
So I'm building a two-family without parking, that's...
Also, the lot size requirement does not apply to an ADU. So it would allow on more parcels than just saying, I'm turning my single-family lot into a duplex.
Right.
Because in those provisions, you still have to meet the minimum lot size requirement.
I jumped in with a question.
Sure.
I don't mean to harp on this, but if it's not going to be owner-occupied-owned, right, who's going to own it?
The owner.
I mean, if I misunderstand what you're saying?
You're going to retire from the postal service and become a landlord.
I'm going to retire and move, I don't...
I mean, anyone could own a single-family house right now and rent it out. Anyone can own a duplex right now and rent it out.
Right.
But if you own a single-family house and build an ADU in the backyard, you have to stay either in that house or the ADU. And if you sell that house, there has to be a provision in the deed that the new owner also has to either live in the single-family house or the ADU.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
That's kind of like where the issue is, is that the future sale of those homes becomes complicated, because you have to, there's like a deed restriction, essentially, on that house, now that they've gone the extra mile and built the ADU. Or that person could buy a single-family house, build an ADU, decide they want really to live in a very large house all by themselves, keep those two units, buy a separate single-family house, and rent out both the single-family house original and the ADU.
If it's in the law, does it have to be in the deed? Do you have to write it up specifically in the deed?
Our current ordinance for accessory apartments, I have you sign what we call an accessory apartment agreement, which lists out the requirements, one of which is it has to, one unit has to be owner-occupied, and I record that with a reference to the booking page of the current owner's deed, so that when that house is sold, it goes with it. So currently, we do document it at the registry that is a single-family with accessory, so that down the road, they can't sell it as a two-family.
And I just want to make sure I understand, because I just want to make sure I get it right, you're proposing to keep that requirement that the owner needs to be on that property in one form, you're taking that requirement?
I'm proposing we remove that requirement, because it restricts how many people will actually build ADUs.
Okay.
And it's not just coming from me, it's what the regional planning commission is... And it's not just coming from me, it's what the regional planning commission is recommending.
So they need to be under common ownership, but not owner-occupied?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I'm getting at.
Yep, yep, so it's not a subdivision, it's, it's all under one ownership, it's just that that owner doesn't necessarily have to live in either of those two units.
And they can rent them out?
They can rent them both.
Okay.
And this is a can rent them out, or this is a, it's expected to be rented out? And the reason I ask is, what happens if the additional dwelling is used as like, an in-law, or you have family because of inflation, they wanna condense and sort of move the children like, back home, essentially, like, in their own homes on the property, but there's no, there wouldn't be a need for, like, um, it was not like an apartment situation.
They wouldn't necessarily need a lease because it's family, that's what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that that is kind of how ADUs came into existence, is that people were trying to put either their elderly parents.
In-laws, yeah.
Right, exactly. So that's how, that's how ADUs started, and now people have gotten kind of used to living in small spaces, and they don't care if they're living in a stranger's backyard, as long as they can live in a reasonable commute to work. And so we're opening it up, that you can rent out an ADU, but there's no restriction that you have to rent out an ADU, which was your original question, I think, Crystal.
Yes, yep, okay. I just wanted the clarification, only because most of the, the conversation has been using the word like renting, and to make note that that's not the only, there are other exceptions, I guess.
It's essentially, the whole point of an ADU is saying you have two dwelling units on the same, on the same property.
Mm-hmm, yeah. I don't know, I don't know if I feel about removing the owner occupancy.
So I know it's a provision that council's going to re-debate regardless of what comes out of this board, because they're also kind of a hung court on that issue, but it'd be best if we could give our recommendation.
It would be good if we gave a recommendation, but we have in the past, gave a recommendation with the caveat that the owner-occupied provision be discussed. So if, if you guys are hung up on that and don't want to make a decision either way, you can recommend approval with the caveat that the council discuss the, the owner-occupied requirement.
On the subject of common ownership, common owner could be, is a landlord, it could be a property owner that could own multiple properties.
Absolutely. It's just saying you can't basically conduitize them and sell them to two separate people. But it could be John Smith that already owns 400 units in Sanford, he could, he could buy that two-family, that single-family with accessory, and add, make it so he has 402 units in Sanford, absolutely.
But that potentially brings us back to discussion of who's maintaining the property. If it's not owner-occupied, and it's owned by a landlord that may be out of state, potentially, who's, who's taking care of the property?
I would agree. Me and Aaron have talked about this, and, and, well, I will say, I have had years of experience here in town, and owner-occupied are typically better maintained, it's, that's not 100% factual, that's subjective thought, and, and just because five years ago that was the case, doesn't mean that five years from now it will still be the case. So while I, I will say, in the past, it has been historically better maintained, Aaron gave me some examples of where, in modern day, thinking that that might not be as prevalent as it once was. Five years from now, I'll, I'll tell you how it's going.
But the city's been going after slum land.
The city has, we, we created the land bank authority along with the apartment inspections as a mechanism, as a tool, in the tool belt, to be able to better hold landlords accountable to follow city and state mandated ordinances and laws. So yes, the city of Sanford has now torn down, I think, 35-ish properties of landlords that, mostly landlords, some single-family homes, that were not properly maintaining their structures. We have aggressively been trying to improve the housing stock in Sanford since the inception of the land bank.
Yeah, so I would argue there's other ordinances in place that take care of property maintenance, and therefore doesn't have to be part of this provision. I mean, you could have a homeowner that also doesn't take care of their property, just because you're requiring them to be owner-occupied doesn't mean that it's well taken care of. It's well taken care of because we have property maintenance code.
I just wish we had a crystal ball to look into to see what it would look like 10 years from now if this was enacted, I mean, that's.
Right.
And on the comment Aaron just made, city of Sanford has adopted the property maintenance code. That is our primarily, primary enforcement mechanism for yard maintenance. It is actually easier to enforce on apartment buildings than it is single-family houses. In the state of Maine, we still have the thought process that you are king of your own castle, and it's much harder to enforce some rules on single-family owner-occupied houses than it is an apartment. So it could potentially backfire that an owner occupies it, because we, we actually have better track record of enforcement on, on non-single-family houses, because in, in the state of Maine, judges do strongly feel that we are still the king of our own castle.
What do we need to, what do we need to close on this?
Do you wanna recommend forward it on as written? Recommend forward it on with a home-occupied provision put back in? Do you wanna recommend that you want the council to, to discuss that provision specifically to, to make the determination? I, I think those are really the three options.
I'd like to see them discuss it at least.
They'll discuss it, as Aaron said.
Regardless, yeah.
We've been breaching the subject with them at subcommittee meetings already, and, and that is, I think, any accessory apartment changes, I think that's pretty much the only hot topic. So I think no matter what, it will be discussed. Even if you guys vote to push it forward as, as written, I will, I would bring up to the subcommittee and to the council that at this meeting, there was lots of discussion on the owner-occupied provision. I, I'm always asked to, to say, how was, how did the discussion go? And, and again, the whole discussion on ADUs has been pretty concise, with the exception of this one topic.
Oh yeah, we have a public hearing also on this.
I'm sorry?
We need a public hearing on this also.
Yes, we do. All right, so I'll clear the public hearing open. Is there anybody who would like to speak in favor of this proposed change? Anybody who would like to speak against this proposed change? Anybody who would like to speak about this change? All right, public hearing is now closed.
Motion that we forward it to the council and have them look at the owner-occupied section.
I second. All right, any discussion?
No.
Kyle?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
And I am yes, six zero. Good luck, Aaron.
Thank you very much.
Good job.
And, and I will second Crystal's remarks on Aaron. She has basically done 99% of this work. She is doing a fantastic job, and I think we are lucky to have her on staff.
Thanks.
Absolutely.
Very lucky.
All right, now it would time for planning director's report.
So Beth Delavelli, your former planning director, has now officially retired. Her last day was yesterday. We did hold a, a celebration of her dedication to Sanford last Wednesday afternoon. It was very well attended. I, I was expecting, a lot of people were probably at work and not able to come, but there was actually quite a few people that, that, that were able to break free. Beth was very happy with the turnout, she was very happy with, with everybody's well wishes and.
The gravel pit cake.
With the cake.
We, the, the planning staff got together, including Alex, and we decorated her cake as a, as a goodbye present, and we, we saw it fitting, where she had devoted two-thirds of her career here at Sanford discussing mineral extraction ordinance revisions. So we, we, we got creative and we, we created a mineral extraction goodbye cake.
That's awesome. Please tell me, is there a picture? I wanna see a picture.
We have pictures.
We have pictures, I got it on my phone. I was a little nervous, I, I thought it was a great idea. We, we executed the idea in the last couple of days, I'm like, I just hope it doesn't upset her. She, she walked in the room, she, she turned around and saw the cake, and, and she absolutely loved it. It was, it was good. And Alex actually had picked up some toy trucks and loaders and cement mixers, and Beth was excited to bring it home for her grandchildren, so.
Awesome.
I thought, I thought the, the celebration went well. So I, I am now officially your planning director, with the help of some amazing staff, so we've been doing this just about a year now. I, I thank you all for your support and your help and your, and your guidance and everything along the way. I, I think we've made some pretty good strides in the first year, and very much looking forward to what next year has to bring.
All right.
Yes, Jamie, you've done a wonderful job, and Aaron as well, and I'm very excited for, not that much has changed, but we're do, like, the, the planning board's even doing a fantastic job, so we're all headed in the right direction.
And I just want to, to say, I think tonight was the first plan that came to you guys, with the only condition being the standard conditions of approval. So we've been working on this for six months to, to get through all the old stuff that, that we didn't tell them upfront, we were gonna be trying to get more specific plans ahead of time. We've been working with the consultants, the consultants have stepped up to the plate, and tonight was an example of what we talked about now, seven, eight months ago, nine, 10 months ago, and I, I think it's working.
Yeah, it was great.
It's definitely gonna make the follow-up on these easier for everything, it's gonna make the follow-up better for the consultants and the owners. It's, I am very pleased that we're, we're, we're almost there. This was, this afternoon, Alex and Aaron were doing up the final reports, and I was typing up the final report, and I'm like, Matt, no, I'm good, Aaron, no, I'm good. I'm like, wait a second, this is the first one where it's standard conditions of approval only, so.
We don't even need printed copies, he brought those with him tonight, so that is usually one of our standards.
So I had, I had made two versions of the, the final thing, one that says you provide three copies within 30 days, and one without, because they were supposed to bring it, but I didn't know if they were, and I was able to, to scratch the one with standard conditions of approval only. I mean, I'm, I'm excited for that, that's, that's awesome.
Yeah, yeah, good work for everybody.
Awesome job.
All right, since Crystal already opened communications, anybody else have anything? All right, we are adjourned.
Motion to adjourn.
Well, you gotta do a roll call.
We don't, we don't, I don't think we really have to vote out the adjournment, city council doesn't.
They don't?
Nope. Nope, the mayor just says it is now 8:17, and we are adjourned.
Oh, we used to do them though, didn't we?
We've done them, because I thought council was doing them.
Beth had us do them.
And Beth had us do them.
All right, I'm not gonna argue with.